This is for all. Approval of the agenda, is there any additions, changes or dilution? Hearing none, I've entertained a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda includes following items for approval. November fourth, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes. The November fourth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes. November thirteenth, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes. The payment of claims listing of bills. And the October financial reports. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Next up is community concerns, and did anyone sign in for community concerns?
No one has signed in, we didn't receive any phone calls or emails.
Okay, alright. Engineering. The concession stand project revised pay request number six, the final pay request. And Travis, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, you approved pay request number six and final. As it was written in the memorandum then, the total amount was fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. However, that was a mistake. It should have been for that amount plus the retainage of five percent that had been held during the project. So instead of doing a pay request seven and final. We had the contractor revise pay request six and final. And we're asking you to approve that tonight of the full amount of the remainder of the project plus the five percent retainage. Total amount, twenty four thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars and forty five cents.
Do we have to rescind that approved pay request then? For the fifteen thousand dollars or not?
This is just the retainage.
Yeah, this is just the retainage.
Well, this is just the retainage.
This is just the retainage.
Sorry.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
That's why we just revised it so that we just paid.
Alright. And, okay.
So it's ready to go.
Yep.
Yep.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve pay request number six, the final pay request.
So move.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? And this is for doubly gravel and the amount of twenty four thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars and forty five cents. That's the retainage that we had retained. To make sure that the project was completed to the specification that we required. And Travis, you were able to confirm that it's been completed and there's no further work to be done on that area?
Correct, yes, there was a walk through with the architect and everything has been completed.
Okay. So a motion on the floor, any other discussion questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you. Old business, approve street name for County Road sixty seven. This item was tabled on the November fourth council meeting. And the council should consider making a final determination for the renaming of County Road sixty seven. And that's, yeah. It's not really a renaming because it is County Road sixty seven. However, the post office does not recognize county roads. It doesn't have an official name, so it's not a renaming. So, I'd entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make motion to name the street Second Street Northeast, or excuse me, the Second Avenue Northeast, I believe it should be.
Second it? It's been moved and seconded to name the Street Second Avenue Northeast.
That'd be the correct corresponding street, right?
Is there any discussion? Well, I guess I would comment that this has been a long drawn out process for a simple street name. And it's probably something that should have been done several years ago officially. Because we have a water treatment facility plant there that is having problems getting its mail, getting things delivered to that site. Because that address officially does not exist. It ends at Fort Pipestone. So the ball was dropped several years ago. And some ideas came up to name that other than just Second Avenue. And to give that area a little personality. To recognize people that have served in the services. And that pretty much has run into a brick wall for really no reason that's legitimate. I haven't heard a legitimate reason not to do it. I've heard that it's Second Avenue and it should remain that way. That's not correct. I've heard that it would be difficult for EMS to, or first responders, to find that location if it wasn't in the grid. That's not correct. We've got a CAT system, we've got computer and dispatching. We could call that street virtually anything, which would show GPS. So, really confusing to me why this became such a big issue. And you all know my point of view on it. Because I have talked to, it was blue in the face, and to no avail, so that's my final comments. Any other comments, questions? And?
Dan?
Yep. We have two.
Do I have someone from the audience? Did you sign in for community concerns?
They don't have to because it's on the agenda, the agenda, Dan, they can speak. It's on the agenda, they can speak underneath. Old business under the street name. It can't be on community concerns because it's literally an agenda item. So they can speak to the agenda item.
So then what they're speaking to, we can't act on? Because it's on the agenda and we don't know whether it I don't, I don't think it speaks to something that's on the agenda. Because we went and all with accurate information before making a decision. Does that sound right or not?
Jason, can you speak to that? It's a, it's a, because it's on the agenda, they get, it can't be on community concerns.
Yeah, that's generally the rule, and I think that's what the council has done, and I think the council has allowed people to do agenda items in the past. So it doesn't impact whether or not the council can make a decision. They'll make, they'll make their decision based on today's and what they can say. It doesn't impact their ability to make a decision.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, yeah, if you want to come up to the microphone and just state your name and address and go ahead.
My name is Ryan Lovekey, actually, I'm a resident, I live in the city, but I do represent the Pips and American Legion family. It was brought to our attention at the last city council meeting, and we took some support from the American Legion. And we corrected that on Facebook as soon as we could. There, we hadn't taken no formal action as far as that was concerned at the time. Since then, last week, the post has met. They voted to not put any support towards naming the former County Road sixty seven Veterans Drive. Tonight, right now, actually, auxiliary is meeting. First thing on their agenda was discussing this, I was at the beginning of their meeting. They also decided, voted against supporting, naming that Veterans Drive. The Sons of American Legion has not formally met. But I can say that I spoke to my board and they are not in support of it, but we will have a vote next week. Just wanted to let everybody know that.
Well, thank you for that information. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Iron Coats, member of the American Legion, representing one hundred and fifty veterans in the community. And also I live at one oh three Tenth Avenue Southwest here in the great city of Pipestone. I really do appreciate the offer of recognizing veterans. However, I would suggest that the next time you want to recognize the veterans with a naming of a place or something like that, if you would come to one of our meetings and make that presentation and get our feedback as to how we feel about a particular recommendation that you have. And with that, I'll reiterate what Ryan has said, we took a vote on it and we're essentially saying thank you, but no thank you on the veterans. So being in that, I would support the Second Avenue Northeast.
Well, thank you. Anyone else with any other comments? With no other comments, I would call the motion then, or call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no, and motion carries.
Is that a four to one or?
No. I
All ayes.
Didn't come out.
Yep. Okay, all ayes, thank you.
New business, resolution twenty twenty four dash fifty eight. Several donations have been received as follows to assist the City of Pipestone's Iowa at the Pageant Park committee with their lights at the lodge event. And I'm going to read them individually here, Greg Welding, Inc., one hundred dollars. A and S Drug LLC, one hundred dollars. Jim and Joyce Cartensen, two hundred dollars. William A. Winter, five hundred dollars. The Pipestone Area Community Foundation, Southwest Initiative Foundation, two thousand, five hundred dollars. O'Neil, O'Neil and Barduson, one hundred dollars. Keith and Desdenetic, one hundred dollars. L. Charles and Dory J. Sandelback, five hundred dollars. And the Pipestone County Medical Center, one thousand dollars. I'd entertain a motion to approve these generous donations for the Iowa at the Pageant Park Lights at the Lodge Event.
I'll make a motion to accept them and offer thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? And again, yes, very generous donations and certainly appreciated, a lot of hard work and effort goes out there to the Lights at the Lodge from a lot of great volunteers and the funding is certainly an important part of that, so thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries. Approve amendment to develop agreement by and between the City of Pipestone and Quick Trip, Inc. Minimum changes were made at the development agreement to the Quick Trip. City Attorney Hill has reviewed the agreement and will present the changes at the meeting, so Jason, I will turn this over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, you may recall, we kind of, the city council approved these, I believe, a number of months ago, I don't know exactly when. So we kind of thought we were done, and then I was surprised when Quick Trip came back with some of these changes. They do, there are no real substantive changes here that really clarifies what, this applies to both of these amendments, I think there's two agenda items. If they're kind of concerned, making sure we clarify that the city is responsible for the city's portion of the stormwater and that they're responsible for their parting. Just to make that part very clear, that was part of the agreement. So it's just kind of some clarification, clarification language I'm at. And they did add a maintenance plan, a third piece of the of the stormwater, which Travis has reviewed and approved. So these are good to go, and I recommend approval of both of these amendments.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, is there all been agreement? So we have motion on the floor and a second to approve the agreement between Quick Trip and the City of Pipestone with minimal change. All in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you. Approve amendment to the stormwater maintenance agreement between the City of Pipestone and Quick Trip Incorporated. And again, minimal changes have been made to the stormwater maintenance agreement by Quick Trip. And Jason has also reviewed that agreement and you're recommending that change also, correct?
Yes, correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion? I saw move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions, discussion? What was the exact change to the agreement?
As I indicated, it really just clarified, there's some additional changes just to make it very clear, kind of more clear than it was, that the city is responsible for the city portion of the stormwater improvements. Because that, that was included in both of those agreements, was the stormwater piece. To make sure they're responsible for, the city is responsible for its, its piece. And Quick Trip is responsible for a portion that is theirs. And it's really kind of, it was in the plats, kind of the, the design of it. And it also, is indicated also, they also provided the maintenance plan that engineers make sure we don't run into issues with them, as long as they stick to the maintenance plan. And then we don't, maybe the city doesn't have any issues with their area, not issues with the city's portion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Next up is approve the airport hangar design proposal for the eighty by eighty hangar at the Pipestone Municipal Airport. And Travis, maybe I'll turn this over to you to give the details on this item.
So, so this is in regards to the project to construct a new eighty by eighty hangar at the airport. Funding is set to be split. Believe it's ninety five, five and five, so the city's responsible for five percent of the construction and engineering of the project. This proposal is for completing design and bidding documents to get that work kicked off. Total cost of services is seventy thousand dollars and the city share of that is seventeen thousand, or seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. So it's actually ninety five percent federal, two and a half percent state, two and a half percent local. So city share is one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. And this is a hangar that we already have an agreement or rental proposal in place?
That we don't, what it is, is there's the bill money through the state and federal. And it, it sunsets on the, in twenty twenty five. So we have to build the hangar in twenty twenty five. And that's why we only have to pay two point, two and a half percent. State pays two and a half percent and then ninety five percent is paid by the federal.
So this will be in addition to the hangars that we already have?
Right, but we have a waiting list, so we should be able to fill that hangar. We actually, and there's another one that will come due in twenty twenty six, same program, same scenario. And again, we have a waiting list.
Okay.
Yep.
And the location of this hangar would be, would that be on the south side of the current hangar?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how I understand it, would that be correct, Travis?
Yes.
I believe it's south.
Yep, it is. Let's see here. Would be to the, actually to the to the east of Taxi Lane Two or just north of the entrance road.
So it would be on the north side of the driveway?
Yep.
And added to that, okay.
Right.
Yeah, okay, alright.
And I believe the other one in twenty twenty six will be on the south.
Okay. Alright.
I'll make a motion, okay, I'll make a motion to approve that design proposal for the hangar at the Pipestone Airport.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Approve the three point two percent off sale beer license at Quick Trip Incorporated. And they've applied for the three point two off sale beer license, they met all the requirements. Fees and investigations have been received, the staff is recommending approval. Any questions, comments from staff on this?
So this will be just for their twenty twenty four license as they open next week. They wanted to make sure and have this license in place so they could open as they typically do. And then they'll be applying for renewal for twenty twenty five at the next council meeting.
Was the pre-pro rated then, or was it the entire fee for the year?
Nope, the entire fee.
Okay, and they were willing to do that. Okay. Alright. I'd entertain a motion then for approval. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you. Next up is to approve the resident manager for the Quick Trip Incorporated in regards to the three point two off sale beer license. And we have Susan Baskerville, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Was approved as a resident manager. And a background check has been conducted, and that was by the sheriff's department, I'm assuming. And city staffs is requesting that council approve the resident manager.
I'll make the motion to approve the resident manager for Quick Trip.
Second that.
So we have a motion on the floor and seconded, any questions or discussion? And that's by city code that we have to have a resident manager. That means it's someone that lives in the city limits, managing that in case there is issues, they're easy to get ahold of at any time, so. Very good. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you. Chamber of Commerce requests for council action, and we have requests for a parade permit. And Erica, did you want to make a formal presentation on that? I'll turn that over to you.
It can just be brief, we tried to include most things in there, so I'm Erica Volker with the Pipestone Area Chamber of Commerce. And we have two requests, they're both on the same sheet, but one is for Friday, December sixth. And that is for, we're requesting a parade permit. We would like to bring back a holiday parade, so it'd be a nighttime lighted parade. Best as I can tell, and from my recollection, as someone who once attended it about twenty years ago is when we last had a parade. This would be, we just named it, if it's approved. And it would be Merry and Bright Night, and it'll be later expanded in future years into Merry and Bright Nights. Kind of work on developing a winter festival around that and kind of coordinating Santa eventually with that. This year, Santa is, will be, as we address in the second part. But, so it would be that evening at five thirty, the route is on the map that you should have received, which would be the lineup would go on that Third Avenue Northwest. And, you know, if we had a just unbelievable response, and there's plenty of room to go out on Fourth, Fourth Street as well. But for this year, I think that should take care of it, it would start at the hotspot corner, go down two blocks to A and S Drugs and two blocks traveling east, and then south two blocks down to right in front of, which is Third Avenue. Excuse me, Third Street, right in front of like where the tank is. And then the last vehicle would be the, would be the fire truck. The fire department has volunteered, if this is approved, to chauffeur Santa Claus, Santa Claus is available and coming. And the reason we don't, that we're not extending over, in case you had a question about all the way through the, the three or four blocks of downtown is because that evening is also the Al Oplens concert. We don't want to interfere with any parking there, people who may be dining or, or having need to park there in terms of getting to the Performing Arts Center, so we want to bring something to town to help them, but not, not compete with that. It's also for the timing lineup would be at five o'clock, we anticipate that it would be done by six, their performance starts at seven thirty. So we should be plenty of time to help augment, get people to town and let people participate while still being able to then enjoy that annual holiday concert if they're traveling or if they're attending on that night. So just requesting permission to do that, the permit, and then we've spoken with Mike Blumendahl, Public Works, they're supportive of that request. And both from him via the fire department assistance as well as just some minimal things with regard to placing signs and having use of cones and whatnot for safety wise. So that would be that request.
Well, good, thank you. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the parade permit for Friday, December sixth, twenty twenty four. At lineup at five o'clock and the parade concludes at six PM. That's West Main Street and Third Avenue Northwest, Southwest headed east two blocks. Public Works and the Fire Department will also be involved with assisting with that parade.
So move.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any questions, discussion? Well, thank you for bringing it back, I think it's going to be a great thing to, to get going again, it's a tradition that got lost there, so.
Yeah.
I can only see it continue to get bigger.
I think it's great, we purposely picked that weekend because the weekend prior to that will be the opening for Lights at the Lodge. So we want to augment and have more things, not compete with them, so. And just one request on that, or I should say one announcement on that, so for anyone in the listening audience, anyone can participate in that parade. So if it's an individual, a family, whatnot, we'll put out the requirements upon this approval about how to be involved and, and whatnot. But whether it's a nonprofit, a school group, it just, you like Christmas and want to get your car all decked out, that is, you are welcome to. So just information will be on our pipesominnesota.com, as well as we'll have it on our Facebook page. And if you receive our chamber newsletter, which anyone can do that as well for free, just contact us to get on that email list. All the information on how to sign up will be there as well.
Thank you.
The second request is
Let's, before we get any further.
Sure.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you.
Sorry, jumped the gun there.
Yeah, no, next up is the chamber request for, let's see, what are you asking for on Saturday, December seventh? For the Santa visit here in our building.
Yes, so two years ago, we moved, we contacted the North Pole and said, you know, Santa, you've been going to the rec center for a long time. We have a wonderful rec center, but you know, Santa is on the same page as the chamber here, and we'd like to highlight various amenities that we have here in town. And so he's been out at the, the airport a couple of years, and we'd like to mix it up. And so we're asking permission to hold it right out here, normally there's shades here, so this is nice, I can point right in this area here. It shouldn't interfere with any of the buildings or security of the offices that, that are tenants here or the city itself. Just if we could have the restrooms open, obviously, and, and those doors, and maybe access for us to come in to be able to set up and decorate maybe the evening before. But we'd like to have Santa there, for one thing, ultimately, grand scheme wise, we ultimately would like to kind of combine those and have that the same night as a parade. This time that doesn't work because Mrs. Claus has a very busy schedule as well and is booked. But in future years, we kind of plan on coordinating that, and that would be close to where the parade route ends, right here. So it's kind of nice for people to warm up and then that would be a nice location, so just trying to kind of gradually get toward that. But for this year, it would be the same kind of timing, which is always the first December, excuse me, first Saturday in December from ten, and we're usually done by about noon. And then coordinating as well with the Pipestone County four H ambassadors to do their make and take crafts. And then Santa this year would be meeting with kids, they could drop off their letters and then take a photo. And then Santa will be giving out different things this year than in the past, they've given treats and he'll be giving some books this year. So we're pretty excited about that as well.
Well, good.
So that would be our request, and then this is not in the request, but I, I was able to, we just held a ribbon cutting. So thank you to those of you who were there for our new newly remodeled Miners Community Library. And at that, I was able to touch base with our public works director, asking about these beautiful snowball lights here. And ask him how difficult it would be to, so as part of this request, it would be also to kind of make some of those so they could be red, green and white. And then as far as I'm concerned, that could stay up all through December, because you don't, you're not doing computer work by them. But I think that would add to the atmosphere there, it'd be a pretty easy fix. Chamber can come up with the bulbs, but I asked him to be responsible for putting them in there because we don't want to break one of those hard to find glass bulbs. But he thought that was a, well, I shouldn't speak for him, but he was willing to do it. And so, and so anyways, so that would be also kind of a request as well, if that was, okay, I counted and there's twenty eight of them. So if we took about two thirds of them and put some color in there, would kind of fun for this, for that visit.
Alright, so we'll add that to the request then.
Okay.
As well as using the building, changing out the lights on Saturday, December seventh at ten AM for the Santa visit. at ten A M. For the Santa visit. And then also make sure Santa gets on his list, our new library too, as a location, because that might be an interesting place some year too.
Yes, right now it's, um, it's, that'd be a little tight for us, but we're, I mean, and, and I don't know if they'd want a bunch of glue or things like that.
Okay.
Although I do believe that they've moved to glue dots now, so I don't want to speak for Brandy, but, um, but yes.
Is there plans to put the, the little house out there on Main Street yet too then?
I'm assuming, I haven't heard anything different about, so that would still be there. So the public, if they're, you know, if they're watching this later or via YouTube.
Yeah.
Um, yes, please put your letters in there and Santa is happy to return, um, uh, have a return letter to all those. And you'd have a first and last name with good handwriting and a full address so that Santa's elves can help him address it correctly. And I would say to have them in there by, um, knowing that Santa still relies on the U S mail system, I would say by December sixteenth.
The earlier the better.
To make sure that they arrive in time.
Okay.
So.
And nothing against the U S mail system.
No, but they're very busy. They, with their own elves there.
They're very busy, very busy this time of year. Yeah.
Got a lot of the whales.
All right, and that also makes a great photo op too. You know, if you want to do some photos and pictures downtown and, uh, yeah, holiday spirit. So great.
And we have some plans for like, for some other cool things, but that's kind of on the county's agenda. So that'll be with the parade night too. So there's a reason that we're ending at the courthouse.
All right. Well, good. So I'd entertain a motion to approve this request as presented.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much and hope to see everyone at the Chamber Chili Cookoff at five o'clock on Thursday at the country club.
Okay.
Everyone's welcome.
Five o'clock Thursday, country club, chili cookoff.
Oh, yeah.
Any closing comments? No closing comments, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.